Okay, so neethu nava pathuthu vandu like uh inneekin the arta fullam udduchirunnaan annikiraan, adhantha orunai start pannra uh neethu nava pathuthu vandu uh uh sorry neethu la day before yesterday nava pathuthu this puducherry buildings lease and rent control act of 1969 and that act udha objectives enna naanudhu patho uh like disproportionate na nareya high renti demand panna koodiya situation irundhu naala tenants udha right to safeguard pandravidamai indha act kondu vandanga so inda objectives artin pandravidamada preamble vandu formulate pannirunnaanga so adha pathalai nava purinsuklan to regulate the letting of buildings both residential and non-residential uh and then to control the rent which is being received or rent which is payable and the third uh objective with which the enactment was made is prevention of unreasonable eviction of tenants adadu section 10 nee kire oru sela set of grounds kuduthu sela set of uh like conditions kuduthu inda conditions la satisfied in the grounds ikile vandamattimen tenants enige evic panna moodiyoon dramaatriyana provisions laam kuduthu unreasonable na ninga vandu tenant veliyathiramoodiyadu abingra marri prevention systema kondu varnunkar kaahavindha act kondu vandanga so idhu moone daan the preamble lendhu inda act udha preamble lendhu nava eduthukku koodiya objectivesa arukumoodiyon and then section one patho short title extent and commencement and uh section two la definition clause la 11 terms adhalina selectiva oru naalu terms or five terms kana definition mattu solirunna adhalila last class la sir kuda nyabachukkutukki easya landlord kundu yel tirpipota seven varu so two class seven la vandu landlord and tenant la T for T so two ten la vandu uh tenant pati solithaanga namari vichyala nyabachukkakal sunanga so naalu terms nava vandu select pannaina two plus four la building na enna naanudhu and then two plus six la government na ee idhar ee specifica edhathana nava ela idhu variki pathaya legislations ellathle ime it was like government na state government rukko illa central government rukko so idhu ipponama parikirathu legislation vandhi it is applicable to uh union territory so appa vandu governmentni yara kurikyun nava terunchukk vendhu idhu konso like idhu konso differenta arukkadanala idhalinu question parathukum aayipurika adhanala i thought it would be an important section so i chose this and adhirkiru president article 239 nee kire yara vandu andu union territory ke administratora appoint pandrongo they will be considered as government under two class six of uh ponisiri buildings lease and rent control act and aduthu two seven nasanamal landlord na yaru and then uh two class nine la repair na enna na ena inda vaathi ee mukyon na edhathana aduthaduthu nava nareya sections la repair indra word vandhu nava repeateda use pandramari irukku so repair indra vaathikana artathu terunchukk arudhu romma mukyon nava generala oru addition oru improvement or pannithu na repair carry out pannirken solamoodiyadu chuma leema like normala oru uh sattan thiriyana manushu solramari namma solakoodaadunkar kada inda addition improvement alteration ko repair indra vaathikku vidyasan thirinunkar inda sectiona choose pannirken so two class nine vandhi talks about repair and two ten vandu sir nyabachukkutukki tricks solirunnaara so ten tenant so tenant la two class ten la tenant na yar yar indra define pannirkaanga and then section three vandhi it was about generally oru exemption class madriyadu so adhalavanni inda act vandhi endhu the premises kula apply ahaadu indra vandu solirkaanga so government own but ra endhu premise ko apply ahaadu and government vandu associate aayukkakoodiya government odharkuulla endhu oru tenancy madriyana relationshipu adhu tenancyin directa solalanakooda tenancy madriyana endhu oru relationshipu government udha uh involve aayirukkara bachitla inda act apply ahaadu indra the section three and section four la than notice of vacancy if oru building vandu landlord rukkaru tenant ikvitturkaru lease ko tenancy ko vitturkaru abingra bachitla there are lot of reasons yeah like vandu uh time modunchu bolaa illa repair carry out pandravikkaa theva pallaa illa avar edhathu vilfula default pannirklaa nareya reason kaahan the building vandu vacant aruthuk vaayipuriku so appi vacant aakuppoode and the building vandu vacant ayarchindra vichyathu vandu authorized officer notharupparu avarkita inform pannano eppriyala inform pannano adhukenna time period landlord ikenna duty tenant ikenna duty subsequent authorized officer enna pannuvaru adhukka pramay aduthaduthu enna narakkuntradu gaan inda section four la solirunnaanga notice of vacancy da idhoor head so idhu varikina neethu patharno ipponama vandu four A pathukporo so four is nothing but release of building release of building na naana andhavaathi udha like inda vaathi ninga pathinkala release pandruthu like vandu oru landlord thanudhu buildinga oru tenancyo or lease kaao oru tenant kuduthurkaru abingra bachitla andhada mundana section nee kire section four ikire adhuv vacant ayarchu andhav vacant seepuruthu notice um kuduthuttaru avar authorized officer so andhada procedure elna follow pannine peragu avar vandhi enna pannuvarana release panna soli keepar release pandruthu na enna thirumbi thanakke kuduthurunga release it in my favor indra na idhoor aatho so na section parikina a landlord may apply to the authorized officer for the release of a building in respect of which a notice has been given under subsection one uh of section four or in respect of which government or under subsection five of section four are deemed to be tenant if so section four a comply panni the building vacant ayarchu the building vacant annuvshyathu ungalta solra ungalta inform pannram panniyachu andhada procedure elna modunchu so adhu modunchu peragana andhada buildinga yenak release pannikudunga yenak favora thirpikudunga landlord keekarudhu da inda section so release of building so inda section nee kire enna na reason kaah keekla landlord eppri keepar first landlord vandu authorized officer ku application kodupparu ee yenak inna building thirumbi venu yenak favora ee inda buildinga eni kodukkunno abhin soli reasons la soli authorized officer ku oru application koduppar so authorized officer vandu andhada application analyze panni and uh if he feels that the reason stated by the landlord vandu justifiable reasonablea irukkuna authorized officer feel pannarana orders vandu landlord ik favora pass pannav so it is not necessary that landlord can claim it as a matter of right but idhu vandu completely upon the discretion of the authorized officer to decide based on each facts and circumstances of a case so idhilavandu naalu situations solirkaanga ippon vandu residential buildinga arukkara bachitla landlord vandu andhada residential building vandu avarikke theva poditcha avar thangrathuke theva poditcha abhinimbo da adhalo oru condition rukku adhe city la town la village la landlord udhu vera building irukkakooda so andhamaari situationla adha explain mani he can ask for release of building and non-residential buildinga arukkara bachitla parking space kaaha vidapatturka andhada non-residential buildinga arukuna adhe reasonma thanudhu vaikilu park pandruthu kaaha avarikke theva poditcha indra bachitla avar vandhi indamari yenak vandhi inda reason kaah yenak inda parking space theva podiddu indra the explain mani he has to give an application to the authorized officer and non-residential buildingla parking space mattum kadayadu parking space illama veren enna space kaaha ninga adharitav pannin dalume enna reason kaah ungalikke theva podiddu yenak idhu venu yenak idhe mariana oru edavandu inda areaala illa so yenak idhu tirpia yenak venu yenak release pannikudunga indra the explain mani application porala and ippon vandu any building if a landlord is religious or charitable or educational public institution ippon vandu oru public institution own pandrav buildinga avangavandu vereyar ko lease ko rent ko vitrinnaanga na avangalamay they can ask for release of a building it's not that private individuals owning property mattunna in the four year porundumman ketak kadayadu educational institutionso illa vandu religious charitable institutionso landlord a irunda kooda section four eight ikire avam vandu release of a building keeklaa indra the provisionla solirkaanga so idhu kenna procedure so authorized officer satisfied a feel panni andhada claim vandu landlord solirka claim bona fide a irukka abhinavavar nannacharana avar vandu landlord ik favora order pass pannvaru illa uh like if reason is not satisfied na andhada application la landlord potta application reject paniyo order pass pannvaru so ippon vandu andhada ippon authorized officer pass pannrarliya order adhali yaro urthungu agree aagrama andhada agree aaguttha pathikki enna enna remidi irukku so avarki enna remidi irukkuna andhada order pass pandrav date la irundhu fifteen days kulla idhu limitation period mari fifteen days kulla he can prefer an appeal to the government so authorized officer four eight ikire pass pandra order ka againsta yara appellate authority na government ikkita thani gipono so adhukka time limit enna na uh fifteen days from the date of receipt of such order andhada order ungalkaile karakirathu tevilene payanjanalukulla ninga vandu government ikkita appeal poro and aga idhilavandu enna na government vandu uh finala inda vichyathu poruthu oru decisionu varra varikku further proceedingsa stay pandrathukku avanglikku uh like powers irukku and it's not a right uh government may order stay of further proceedings ta so it is to the discretion of the government to either stay or not stay depending on facts vandu avam over vichyathu over mari decide pandrathukana vaayipuriku and aduthu aduthu enna narakkum a building released in persons of order made under subsection two ippon okay landlord application kudutharara authorized officer kundu landlord solra reason vandu nyayamapadiddu avar okay ningale vandu inda buildinga vandu na release pannra adadu tech release pannra inda act ikirendhu release pannranndra maria athoona chukonga so ningavandu ninga landlord vandu ninga eduthukla abhin soli authorized officer solitara solitara angamode ippon enna ippon enna narakkum within thirteen days of receipt uh within thirty thirty days of the date of the receipt of the order or such further period as may be allowed by the authorized officer be occupied by the landlord or by the member of his family for whose occupation the building was required to be released or shall be put to such use for which the release was obtained enna reason kaah ninga keettu release keetinglo andhada applicationla idhu kaah yenak venu soli ninga release keedripinga andhada reasona satisfy panni andhada reasona fulfill pandramari ninga vandu possessiona muppadunali kulla eduthurnongaradu statute remanded muppadunali indra the specifica solirkaanga idhu thaandi oru vela authorized officer ungalke vera dadu landlord ik vera dadu time koduthurundharu okay inda reasonnaala enna thirteen days kulla modike mudiyadu uh like modike mudiyadu na occupy mana mudiyadu andhada purpose fulfill panna mudiyadu ee yenak no or five days time venu ketta officer koduthurundharana andhada time period kulla andhada landlord vandhi endhu purpose kaah building release sayappattado andhada purposes solve pandramari he should take the position adhu da section four A four and aduthu enna narakkum where a building released under subsection two has not been occupied occupied pannano thirteen days kulla occupy pannano indra the previous class ippon pannalana enna aakundradu adutha class where a building released under subsection two has not been occupied by the landlord or by the member of his family or has not been put to such use for which the release was obtained within the period specified nava munna sanamari thirteen days or other time as may be granted by the authorized officer but is either let out or kept vacant the whole or any part of the building or put to use for a purpose other than the one for which the release was obtained such building shall be deemed to have become vacant from the date of expiry of period specified in the previous subsection and provisions of subsections one three four five and seven and nine of uh section four shall apply to such buildings adadu section four indra the notice of vacancy so ippon enna na thirteen days kulla edukunno thirteen days illana authorized officer kodukkara time kulla ninga vandu possession eduthukunno ippon edukalena enna aakundradu da idhulae explain manirkaanga and enda reason kaah ippon yenak parking kaah inda building inda space theva podiddu na you should you should make sure that within a period of thirteen days ungalvaikilani anga path pandrikyan illa ennodu dependent korande kaah inda building theva podiddu na thirteen days kulla dependent koranya andhaveedla kodivikruthukana air param ninga sendjirukunno enda reasona soli ninga release keekriinkalo andhada reasona satisfy pandramari andhada buildinga udha possessiona muppadunali kulla edukunno eduk edukala edukalena enna na andhada building deemed to be vacant vacant inna sattataala karudapadum indra the soldraanga so ippon deemed to be vacant inna provisione solitsu so ippon enna aakuna ippon vacant ayarchu so ippon ninga enna pannano vacancy notice of vacancy nee section four ikthirupi poru so deemed to be vacant so vacant dana peragana ninga notice of vacancy authorized officer kodukunnoon section four solidu so four eight kire ninga inda thirteen days kulla eduklanndra bachitla it will be deemed to be vacant and thirumbi ninga vandu four kire poey notice of vacancy kodutha andhada procedurela follow pannano indra the section four A five so section four A complete ayarchu uh aduthathu vandu section five vandu fixation of far rent poruthu solruthu so inda far rent poruthu fix pandrathukana authority yar ikkukuna controller ikkukku ippon varikina nava pathathu ellame authorized officer nu patho so confuse pannikadinya far rent poruthu applicationa decide pandrathukana authority controller kitarukku so yar apply pannala landlordam pannala tenantum pannala so rendu kermi pannala provision persha arukku idhooru cracks mattu na solra nyabachukta poro so landlord or tenant o controller ku oru application make pannala so idhulae grounds indra the vandu nareya solirkaanga enna na groundsa consider panni uh controller vandu andhada order pass pannvaru far rent or buildinga udha far renta eblu like ippon oru ippon oru buildinga irukke inda buildinga vandu na vandu 25000 vaada far rent inna solranana andhadi 25000 aya na chuma soliramoodiyadu inda inda reason kaah na inda amount direct panni inda 25000 athena far renta solranndra the controller solnu so inna inda reason indra the controlleray eduthukumoodiyadu sectiona solirukku inna inda reasonala pathu far renta ninga calculate pani solinga indra the so andhada grounds ta adhalavandu section five la explain pannirkaanga uh residential buildinga irunda nine percent grass return or uh grass return per annum annum na over vashtu koonatho on total cost of building buildinga udha mothamadipulla over vashtu ko oru na like andhada building vandhi eblu grass return taruddu andhada building eblu vandu namukondu taruddo adhalairunna nine percent irukkunno abingradu residential building poruthu non-residential building poruthu twelve percent irukkunno indra the adadu minimum twelve percent irukkunno indra the groundsla solirkaanga and aduthathu innon enna pannanuna uh andhada buildingla amenities irukla naasonnai section vandu inda actla section one to thirty five irukku rendu schedule irukun sonu section five ikiru na andhavrendu schedule ime nava pathukporo so uh ippon the ippon na inda buildinga 25000 va rent inna solran abhinna andhada amenities andhada buildingla eblu eblu amenities irukke abhinradu yu pathuthu thana solnu na chuma vandu 25000 na soliramoodiyadu so amenities enna na abingradu vandu supply of uh schedule one la pathinkuna supply of water electricity passage staircase lights lavatories lifts conservancy sanitary services ni innamari oru listu koduthurkaanga ippon oru rent orayamadri buildinga aduthaduthu compoundla irukku oru buildingla vandu ninga vandu like enna solruthu vere star case mattunna irukku innow buildingla lift irukku inda buildingla adhe mari sanitary services nallarukku but pakathulla udha adhe buildingla andhada sanitary services la nallalana rendu buildingko ninga vandu twenty five thousand solamoodiyadu logicakay ponnle ya ippon naalu maadila vedu irukkunna lift irunna vaadaka jasti aavatam pothu so adhe logicta amenities enna indra the schedule one la solirkaanga andhada amenitiesa provide pandrathukki ennalakostachu adhyum consider paniya far renta decide pannanu indra the provisione solidu and aduthathu innon enna enna consider pannuma the cost of the construction of the building should be taken into consideration uh ippon vandu uh nava building na enna indhu kaana definitioni nava munadiya patho adhu vandu building na just a minute building vandu uh it includes means building and hut so hut goda building na so inga the cost of construction of building na nava buildinga mattu eduthukooda oru hutka construct pandrathukka aagre salavu vera adhe edhalau oru buildinga eduprathu concrete potta buildinga eduprathukka harika construction salavu vera so idhalaa consider pannanu and depreciation at the rates in at the rates in schedule two schedule two unna rendadu schedule la depreciation ratesa ebbi calculate pandrathundra di solirkaanga so adhayum manasalavichudhu da controller vandu uh far rent applicationa decide pannuvo the order pass pannanu nusolraanga depreciation na enna na ippon land udha value na erigite bogumethaavara building udha value indra the korunchite aavam pogum ippon inneke inne oru oru vashtu kumunadi oru vedu kattiikkaanga adhe areaaliya vandu nooru vashtu kumunadi irukka vedu kattiikkaanga endevedikku madi padi gunndra the namakee thiriyum so building udha depreciation pradu vandu over vashtum jasti aidha aavam pogum so andhada schedule two la enna koduthurkaanga na enna type of buildingki eblu depreciation rate vandu controller eduthukunno calculate pandrathukki use pannikunno abingradu allavandu schedule uh two la solirkaanga adhukka actually oru formula gudhu koduthurkaanga the actual depreciation of a building is the years is calculated by using the formulaan soli koduthurkaanga so adhalavantha andhada sela terms la use pannirkaanga years na ippon nooru vashtu buildingna andhada nooru vashtu kana building udha depreciation value ninga ebbi calculate pannuvinna indra the solirkaanga so idhu detailla terunchuknu ungal like thevan thonuchu puriala padispanna purialana na explain pannra ena idhu applod terunchuknu navasya olla so idhulae enna na grounds vandu manasalavichudhu controller order pass pannvaranndra the mattu nyabachukkaanga ena ala formula konju persha arukku uh pathuthu purialana explain pannunu nan sinna solinga I'll explain it separately so naalu factors grass written value of the building to be considered the cost of providing amenities as in schedule one to be considered cost of construction of the building also to be taken into consideration and depreciation at the rates as mentioned in schedule two is also to be considered in deciding an application of far rent under section five by the controller so idhulaa section five uh aduthu section six poranama section six vandu uh change in far rent when admisible so ippon okay section five kire ninga far renta vandu fix pannitinga so fix panna far renta generala mathamattanga epala mathuvaanga indra the kana situationsa section six la explain manirkaanga so if epapa mathuvaanga if there is addition alteration improvement inna moone vaathi nava vera oru edhal patho uh the repair na enna indra the define pannubode inna moone vaathi patho inna moone me it will not come into category of repair indra the patho so repair pannana ninga far renta vandu jasti pannamoodiyadu ena ninga padayarundha conditionu kala naramikha andhada buildinga kondarringa ahaa idhalaa abhi kadayadu nallavaa irukku building ninga additionala edho pandringa uh rendu maadi irukka vedla nallarukkara rendu maadi vedla muraadu maadi kattarundra the addition improvement na ninga vandu okay a car narthrathukku open space lenuthiikkaanga ninga enna pandringa na oru shedu bodringa abingradu improvement so idhalaa vandu ninga pandringa abingrapachitla far renta vandu change pandrathukki alter pandrathukki ninga thirumbi controllerthu ninga vandu application koduthla ippon vandu additiono alterationo improvemento landlord salavu pannipannirundharu abhinna first situationla enna narakkum landlord vs tenant uh application will be filed the uh before the controller to increase that rent rendadu situation eppri tenant vandu landlord ka againsta nipparu to decrease the far rent if the amenities are reduced suppose lift irukka buildinga 25000 aachurunnaanga palamasama lift vaala seela andhada liftla edho issue andhada lifta use a pannamoodila abhinna uh like obviously amenities korunchirukku schedule two la sonu amenities vandu andhada amenities kaada na 25000 otthikkaa ippon lift illa na andhandaan naal maadi airra so 25000 enna rent kodukkumoodiyadu na that's logic so rendu it's not that only landlord can file an application tenant may can file an application under section six to change the far rent change da idhalavandu increase in far rent indra the section kadayadu change in far rent da so increaseum pannala decreaseum pannala increase pandrathukka landlord application file pannvaru uh decrease pandrathukka tenant vandu application file pannvaru so idhu me abhinna far renta decide pandrathukki ebbi controller ku power rukko uh change in far renta decide pandrathukku controller ku thana power rukku so far rent applications under this act will be decided only by the controller oru misshom okay uh aduthathu vandu section seven section seven vandu uh landlord not to claim or receive anything in excess of far rent or agreed rent so okay first far rent vandu uh far rent fix pannano abingradu section five aduthu section six vandu far renta epala change pannalangaradu six so seven okay decide aayachu far rent idhu da illa change pannanu na adhalaa maatiachu so ippon finala oru amount ik vandachu so idhu thaandi landlord vandhi edhu vanga koodaadunkaradu section seven landlord not to claim or receive anything in excess of far rent or agreed rent uh and adhalavandu exception vandu advance amount vayinkala so one month rent mattunna advancea vanglaanndra the section seven and ippon premium some innamari different different words use pannina vandu uh eblu amount kudanavandu tenancy vandu renew pandrayilla continue pandra abhinla soli tenant ikidende landlord vandu paisa vanglaaman ketta vanga koodaadu any premium or sum to grant renew or continue the tenancy given by the tenant to the landlord adhu eppri inda act parathukum ungalade koduthurunna kooda even if it was given before 1969 inda act forced vandhupperagu far renta thaandi landlord vandu tenant ikidende ennalak amount vangiindharo adhu ellathyam avar thirpikuduthurno indra the section seven so inda section seven mattu ebbin pathinkuna it has a retrospective effect uh not only after the act act ikumunadi avan vangiindhalume landlord vandu thirpikuduthurnu ippon suppose vandu excess of pay pannikanga abhinna adhuvandu tally panniklaan adjust panniklaanndra di section seven la solirkaanga suppose landlord return mana moodila abhinna okay rentla kaischitthe vanduklaam masa masa undra the and ippon suppose vandu uh far rent vandu fix pannala fix pandrathukana the situation anavari far rent vandu mandatory insolala far rent fix pannanun thonuchunna landlord o tenant o apply panni controllerthu order vayinkalaanndra da so ippon fix pannavee la oru building far rent vandu controller order pass pannavee illana enna na rent payable mattu receive pannikla landlord rent payable vandu vandu that is something which is agreed between the landlord and tenant at the time of tenancy okay inda buildingki 20000 va rent na otthikuttha na ulavara abhinna ee landlord vandu enkitana andhadi 20000 mattunna vangla abingradu section seven so nothing but renta thaandi far rent fix pannintha far rent fix pannalena enna endhu rentika agree pannitu vandeno andhada rent adha thaandi landlord edhu me vanga koodaadunkaradu section seven so aduthu section poro section eight vandu landlord is liable to give receipt for rent or advance so advance vanglaangaradhi section seven la patho one month renta vandu advancea vanglaangar so ippon ninga vangiite aakanga oru landlord receipta koduklanana koduthathukkena proof amakay ponnle ya logic adhanala receipt kodukkunno landlord vandu uh section eight ikire landlord is bound to give receipt for the rent and advance that he receives so ippon suppose vandu uh inda receipt kodukamatrare renta vanga mattarare na vandu legal tenant lawful tenant abhinana na asset tenant yenak enna remidi vanga mattarana logicanam enna pannu na vandu landlord ik keepa intha pa renta vichukonda avar kodukamatra vanga mattarangaradu bachitla na enna pannuva bank details aadu kodu abhin soli landlord ik na notice anuppa notice na it's not necessary formula yenak vandu bank detailsa kodunna keepa abhina notice kodutha teedi landhu patunali kulla tenant landlord vandu reply pannanu pannala abhinna na enna pannuva shiri keetum pathasi bank detailsa kodukmattarana enna pannuva shiri okay money order laanupla rent through money order convenient illaya money order anuprathukum vaayipulaya controller munadi renta deposit pannirla abingradu section eight so if a landlord is liable to give receipt edukku rent advance idhalaa vangrathukka avar receipt kodutha aakunno adhe madri landlord vandu rentayo rentayo advanceyo advance obviously vayinkar renta vangrathukka marukkarana tenant ikiruka remedy enna na uh bank detailsa keethu notice anupla notice teedi landhu patunali kulla landlord reply pannanu pannalena tenant enna pannala money orderla rent anupla adukku vadi illaya controller munadi andhada renta deposit pannirla idhulaa section eight and idhukki kire abhinna sir landlord vandu uh it's not that adhe bank accountam maintain pannanu navasya olla explanation clause la enna solirkaanganu landlord vandu bank accountam mattharare abhinana andhada bank account details matthuna vichyathu he shall be uh duty bound to inform it to the tenant innavari intha accountu vana inima intha accountu deposit panniga abhin soli landlord vandu tenant ik inform pannirnu abingradu explanation clause uh ippon naasonnai leya bank details keethu notice anupnu illa abhinana vandu money order anupla illa abhinana controllerthu koduklan idhellana over sub clausea explain pannirka so aduthathu section nine right of tenant to deposit rent in certain cases so enna inda situationla tenant ik vandu renta deposit pandrathukki right rukke abhinana landlord udha address yenak thiriyala like avar vedu thana yenak thiriyon na kodivitam but avar udha exact address yenak thiriyala exact address yenak thirunchaava na vandu bank details keethu noticeho edhuva avar reach panna try pannamoodiyu so avar udha address yenak thiriyadu bachitla controllerthu na deposit pannala apramay enna avan narakkunna yar andhada renta receive pandrathukki urima pattaavanglo who is the entitled person andhada person will make an application to the controller to the recovery amount idhu em building na ivar yenak ikiru thana tenant aarukkaru avar avar deposit pannikka rent vandhi yenak varavendi amount idhu yenak kodunga abhin soli andhada person vandu application controller koduthu andhada application melaa controller order pass pani renta vandu avartak koduppar ippon suppose vandu uh yar vandu landlord indra the le dispute rukku dispute regarding the status of landlord na tenant enna pannavara renta vandu okay ivattu oru velanana vandu yenakravantha kodukra B dhireen vandu naantha vandhada buildinga landlord nu pathoana yenak edukka confusion na bhati aedha koduthu dhireen na orunnaal vandu B da andhada buildinga udha owner nenak thiriyavandusna eethu na kodutha rent fulla waste so E va B aanenak doubtfula arukku angamode na enna pannuva enkprachinayavana na controllerthu koduthara ninga ungalukullarukka prachinayam moduchu yar unmayana ownero ninga vay controllerthu vayinkyunga abhin soli like idhu more or less logicta renta vandu controllerthu deposit pannitu controllerthume enna pannavara na ivangalukullarukka dispute decide aaravarku wait pannithu he'll hold the amount until the dispute is decided and then once once uh a decision has been arrived as to who is the real owner or who is the person who is entitled to receive the amount adhu decide aaravarku andhada amounta Until it is decided, the controller holds the amount. After it is decided, who is entitled to give the amount? This is section nine. What is the situation where tenant, deposits the rent? If my address is not known. Is it not? Who is landlord? In these two situations, tenant, deposits it. So, next is section ten. Section ten is eviction of tenants. Uh, nothing but, like, what is the grounds? What is the grounds? What is the grounds? Tenant, you have seen. What is the grounds? Landlord is entitled to claim eviction against tenant. This is section ten. So, this is the main section. Next, all of this is procedural aspects. So. In this, grounds, this section, as I said, section four is very big. I will explain only the cracks. You all, read the section, explain it. It is very lengthy. So, I will explain only the cracks. If you do not understand anything, you can pass it. I can help you out. So, uh, suppose, like. A tenant shall not be evicted whether in execution of a decree or otherwise, except in accordance with the provisions of this section or sections fourteen to sixteen. So, in the provisions, it is governing eviction of tenants. Provided that where tenant denies the title of landlord or claims right of permanent tenancy, the controller shall decide whether the denial or claim is bona fide. And if he records a finding to that effect, the landlord shall be entitled to sue for eviction of the tenant in a civil court, and the court may pass a decree for eviction on any of the grounds mentioned in the said sections, notwithstanding that the court finds that such denial does not involve four features of lease or that the claim is unfounded. So, suppose, if I, in this, a tenant, landlord, is there? I deny the title of the landlord. Is it not? It is not. I am the, in the, in the, permanent tenancy, I claim it. They are not the owners, they are not the landlords. The issue is, when the controller decides. Then, what should they do? Landlord, tenant, filed a suit. In this section, the section, what reason? I ask eviction. That is, let us ask. So, if, like, the title of landlord, decide. The controller also decides. So, the controller decides, passes the order. Okay, this building, this is the landlord. The controller passes the order. Landlord will be entitled to sue before the civil court under section ten to seek eviction of the tenant. So, that is, that is only the start of this section. So, so, what should they do? Landlord, the controller, gives the application for eviction. So, obviously, principles of natural justice follow. Tenant, give reasonable time. To represent his case, give him an opportunity. Then, this case is decided. So, what is the grounds? There is seven grounds. First, rental areas. So, we have said before, rent payable, like, fifth calendar month. Every fifth calendar month, pay. So, after the agreed date, or tenancy agreement, there is a date. In this, it has lasted 15 days. Within fifteen days of agreed time. Rental areas, agreed time, is there. Rental areas, there is. That is one ground to seek eviction of tenant. Second ground. Uh, now, I am a builder, I have left the tenancy. So, I left the tenancy. So, I have the right. I have the right. So, no written consent. What should I ask? I accept it. He should not transfer his right to another person without the written consent of the landlord. And, suppose, I am a building, residential purpose. He is going to go to the homes, and he is going to wash the car. There is a wall. I leave it for residential purpose. I am a non-residential purpose. I give it to the building. That is, a valid ground to claim eviction of tenant under section ten. Uses the building, if the tenant uses the building for purpose other than which, other than for which it was let. What is it? Give it to him, other than the purpose. It can be a valid ground for eviction. And, the second ground. Tenants act, impair the material value of the building. Now, we will take an example. Now, I am saying, I am a residential building. You are, you are a big place. You are, in that place, you are putting a wall. Or a small restaurant. The building is wrong. So, the material value of the building is damaged. So, you, tenant, a person, a person's act. The material value of the building is damaged. It can be a valid ground to seek eviction under section ten. The second ground. Now, tenant, a tenant is there. A building is immoral, illegal use. An offense, that is, an offense. He is convicted. So, this is a very important issue. He should be convicted under law. Foreign offense relating to immoral or illegal use of the building. The building is illegal or immoral, he has used it. In the jail, he is convicted. That is, when the conviction is solved, we will ask landlord for eviction. And, the second ground. Tenant adds nuisance to other occupiers. Now, I am a building, I have six floors. Six floors, over floor, I am a person. On the second floor, there are, talking, everyone is disturbed. Let us ask. I will tell you an example. So, he is doing a thing. It is a nuisance to other occupiers. So, in this situation, it is a valid ground to seek eviction under section ten. Next, tenants cease to occupy the building for continuous four months without reasonable cause. Now, I am a person. Now, suppose, Rajiv, I am a person. They are, in the building, like, four months. Four months, statutory period. Four continuous months. Lives, endless. Continuous or four months, they are putting the house. The building is occupied. Reasonably, nothing, no cost. They are going to throw it away. So, if there is no reason, okay. So, a tenant ceased to occupy the building for continuous four months without reasonable cause. And, it can be a valid ground for seeking eviction. And, the next, tenant, if he denies the title of landlord. They are, now, Rajiv, I am a person. I am a person. They are the landlord. But, I am a person. They are not the owner. They are, she is not the landlord. What should we do? I have said this at the beginning. What should we do now? First, the controller goes. Is it not, I am the landlord of the building. They are not the landlord. I am the landlord of the building. This is the proof. The controller first gives the application. The landlord's status is first, like, raised. Then, against, in this ground, we will declare eviction. They are not the landlord. So, I go to the controller, and I buy the order. They claim permanent right of tenancy. You cannot give it. This is a valid ground under section ten to claim eviction of a tenant. And, now, this is the major grounds. So, in this, there are procedural aspects. Rental areas, we have seen. So, the rental areas, how to do? Little, little nuances, explained. So, now, rental areas are there. Controller, if he feels that default is willful. Like, if he does not give it. Controller, the tenant, thought. Controller, fifteen days, like, not greater than fifteen days. 15 days, give it, and then, pay the rent. That is, let us say. So, deemed fiction, there is a deemed fiction concept. Uh, now, about willful, willful default. So, if he does not give the rent. That is, the willful default concept. If tenant does not pay the rent after demand notice by landlord for two months. Now, landlord, two months, notice. Pay it, give it, give it, give it. If two months, notice, not given. That is, willful default is deemed. Now, this is explained. Previously, the controller gives a power. Willful default is not, the controller thought, give us 15 days, pay the rent. That is, said. So, if he pays the rent, you cannot evict it. So, if the willful default is not, the controller gives a discretionary power. So, if he misuses it, he should not do it. However, landlord supports it. I have a deemed fiction concept. I asked, two months, notice. If not, it is willful default, deemed. The provision is explained. So, that is. Uh, in this situation, landlord, the controller, asks possession. Apply it. Explained. Like, a residential building is there. No need for hesitation. Landlord requires it for his own occupation. What should he declare? What should he give the application? I have this community, this community, I have this. A residential building is not. So, because of that, I have this residential building, I have this. That is, the application, file it, and ask possession. One, the second. Non-residential building is there, parking space is there. In this area, parking, vehicle parking, this is not a facility. Because of that, I have this. Because of that, they are coming out, I have to give possession. Non-residential building, the same way, non-residential building. Parking is not, parking is not, for other use. This is, this is, this is not for me. Because of that, I have this. The tenant came out, I have this. The building is to give possession. That is, landlord, give the application. And, suppose, in this, another issue is explained. If landlord, if landlord becomes the landlord only after tenancy, he shall wait for a minimum of three months to use the above provisions. Now, we have many grounds. Uh, residential building is there, I have this. Non-residential building is there, parking space. Many things, grounds, we will discuss. Now, this is generally, landlord is allowed. Suppose, I am a building, I am Rajiv. I am the rent. I am the landlord, they are the tenant. Now, what should I do? This house, this building, I am, another person, I will go. X, you will go. Now, what should the X do? Landlord, the X comes. So, now, landlord, X, Rajiv, tenant. When he comes, is Rajiv allowed? That is, ask. Because the building is the owner, Rajiv is the tenant. So, landlord comes into picture as landlord only after tenancy. Tenancy is the reason why the rent is paid. So, after the tenancy is paid, I am the owner, I am the seller. He comes to the landlord. After he comes, he uses the provision, and asks if he can evict it. Minimum of three months, he must wait. Newly, the X, landlord, minimum three months, wait. This is the provisions, use it, and ask for eviction. And, why do you keep this? Suppose, now, a tenant, it is not possible. I know a person, they are talking, they are coming, they are not allowed. This is not allowed. This is not allowed. Because of this, they keep this. And, if landlord, now, I have said before, landlord, release of building. Section four, I have said. Landlord, religious, educational institution, or is there? Release, ask. The same way, eviction, they can claim. It is not that section ten, eviction of tenants, private individual landlords, only, ask. A building, a educational or religious charitable institution, owned. They are giving the tenancy to each other. They also use section ten, and claim eviction. This is explained. And, next, another situation is explained. Now, a building, landlord, tenant, is there. That is, now, a building, ground floor, or ground floor, you also have to divide. Ground floor, only one portion, landlord is there. Another portion, tenant is there. Now, in this situation, landlord, tenant, is coming out, the application is filed. What reason is it? This building, this is residential, not only, not residential. This building is needed. What is the additional use? That is, explained. Then, apply it. In this, one condition is explained. The condition is explained. That is, in this provision, the reason why landlord and tenant, in the same building, tenant, in this, this portion, I have this. Additional, this is not allowed. Landlord, asking for eviction. The tenancy period, only, he can ask. The tenancy period, when it is there, he cannot ask. So, because you are there, you are there. You have this. So, agree on the tenancy period, first, finish. Then, the ground, explain it. You should ask additionally. That is, the provision level, the condition. And, this is, obviously, the application, the controller, both, the controller, the situation, see. What is it, they are not required? That is, all of this, see, and decide. And, in this, member of armed forces, a special, like, a special mention. A landlord, armed forces, member, landlord is there. He is retired. If he is not in service. In this situation, the controller, the application. Now, I have explained a situation. Educational, charitable, religious institutions, asking for eviction. The same way, armed forces, retired, or is not in service. They can claim eviction under section ten. Like, if they are the landlord, they can file a petition before, an application before the controller. And. Why, 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 they are specifically saying? They treat it as a landlord. What is their special advantage? That is, we will discuss. Now, landlord, if sufficient proof is given that it is an authority under Indian Soldiers Litigation Act of nineteen twenty-five. And that, the, and that, the authorities, give a list. This category, you are here. That is, a landlord, sufficiently, proved, proved. He is against, like, he is favoring, order passed. The building is there, the tenant is there. That is, the controller passes the order. What is the advantage of the landlord in the service? One month time, tenant, evict, and give it. The tenant is directed to give possession of the building in one month. If liable to be evicted. Service, armed forces, landlord, yes, or not, tenant, evict. That is not allowed. That is, the merits, decide. After that, if he is in the armed forces. Because of that, he has an added advantage. In the order passed, in the last month, evict. He should give it. That is, the advantage. So, if a person, armed forces, member, or not, he is an armed officer, or not, who decides? He is, in the Indian Soldiers Litigation Act, he is an authority, or not, who decides? The controller. He has the proof, and, okay, he is in the armed forces. So, order passed, tenant, if he is liable to be evicted, one month, give it. That is, the controller decides. Next, what is it? If landlord, in occupation of the premises allotted to him by government, is required to evict or has retired from service, gives affidavit that he or his family does not possess a building in the same commune. It is not as a matter of right if he owns two or more dwelling houses in the union territory of Kuducherry. One minute. Uh, one minute. Uh, section ten, three, B, A. Where a landlord, who, being a person in occupation of any residential premises allotted to him by the central government, state government, or any local authority, is required by, or in persons of any general special order made by that government or authority to vacate. Is required by or in persons of any general special order made by that government or authority to vacate such residential accommodation or in default to incur certain obligations. On the ground that he owns in the union territory of Kuduchiri a residential accommodation. Either in his own name or in the name of a member of his family. Adadana na ippo enak vandhu oru buildingirukka na vandhu na vandhu oru landlord. Enak vandhu Paandichiri la oru areaala enak oru veediruthu adhanavatka ungalukka renta kuttirukkaya. But na vandhu uh enak vandhu government vandhu vera oru edathla veedu alert pannirundhrukkaanga ochukonga. Yarkanave alert pannirundhrukkaanga but subsequentana andhuvandhu edatha vangiirka. Apramanaa vera orutha rukte tenancy vittutte abhin ochukonga. Ippu vandhu enna panraanga government vandhu onakidhe areaala oru veedirukke. Adhanala onna vandhu onakina alert panna veedanavandhu tirumbavangiikiraya. Vera oru veedirukkundhrathu reasona solli government vandhu enak alert panna veedat tirumbavangiikiranga. Apphina andha mari situationla indha reasona soliyeh na vandhu naa vaadikutirukkaya liya oru tenant. Oru veedta vandhu vaadikutirukkaya liya oru tenant kita. Andha tenant veliyathu soli na kekla. Na andhavari enak government alert pannindanga. Adhanala naa angukkuyidhunna indha veedva vaadikutta. But eh enakidhe areaala oru veedirukke adhanavatka orutha vaadikutirukkaya. Andha reasona soliyeh enna vandhu ippa government quarters like enak alert panna government vandhu tirumi vangiikkaanga. Adhanala enakidhi indha tenant veliyathithu enakindha buildinga kudunga abhin soliyum landlord vandhu kekla. Adhunna section uh ten three B A. Um. Adhuda fulla explain pannikkaanga adhutadu. And ippa suppose naa one month like one month renta vandhu advanceavaa vangalaaan solirukkaya liya. So ippa andh uh ippa indha section tenne kida order pass panni tenant evict pannalaaan solitanga. So sonnaparagu andhukudukupitda advanceoda uh nalama enna abhina. Andha order pass panna eviction order pass pannateedi lernu ninety daysukulla. Uh sorry eviction order pass panna dateilla premises onga kaiku vandhu teedi lernu. From the date of recovery of premises tonnur naalikulla. Ippa eviction order inneek pass pannala. Ana andha building vandhu enak vandhu padhnaal kaeshtan kaila kadakidhunna. Enak kaila kadakirathede lernu tonnur naalikulla andha andha advance na vandhu tenantikida thirupi kuddutarnu. Kudukkalana enna apna simple interest calculate aha arambikyum at the rate of six percent per annum. Abhingrathu provisionla kuddurthukaanga. So endhanda situationla ippu adhut adhut scenario endhanda situationla. Tenant it againsta eviction order vanga mudiyaadu abhingrathu idhin section tenla solirkaanga. Suppose oru tenant vandhu essential servicela employai rukkaru. Essential servicena enna government vandhu notify pannvaanga indhanda categoryla essential service. Andha essential service kida employai rukkarunna andha tenant it againstka indha sectionikida ninga eviction claim mani vanga mudiyaadu. Ippu suppose vandhu andha building vandhu educational purpose kaha ninga let out pannithinga section tenne kida ninga eviction claim mana mudiyaadu. And ippo okay evict panniyachse eviction order vangiachse andha tenantthu andha buildingavutupoyitaru. Ippu enna nadaku andha landlord enna pananoonna. Andha evictana andha possession andha building ivarukaiku vandhu teedi lernu oru maasatukulla. Avr vandhu reoccupy pannanoo enna reason kaha vandhu. Uh andha buildinga vandhu eviction kettu vanganaro ippu suppose vandhu enak additionalaa teevapadhu da abhin soli kettu vanganaruna. Andha additional use kaha avr odane andhu oru maastukulla agidipanninu. Illa enakid teevapadhu ippu na previous or examples sonna. Enak alert panna patta veedta vandhu enak idhe areaala vera oru veedirukkundhrathunaenana vandhu kaali pannasukkuraanga so enakadu veno abhina. Indha veetlannu enak alert panna patta veetlannu naa kaali panni. Tenant vandhu veliyarunna onene enno oru sondhu veedukkina odane oru maasatukulla payednu. Andha time period undhrathu one month. The landlord shall reoccupy the premises within a period of one month. Okay occupy pannittaru. Oru aar maasam andhu waiting period. Aar maasatukulla oru nyayamana karnalama vacate pandrarunno ochukong. If the landlord vacates the premises within six months without any reasonable costna. Ippu tenant enna pannalana controllerkutirumbi anupalaa. Controllerkka application file pannala. Andha. Enna enna application ivr enna veliyathinaru indha reason solli. Adhukapru chuma olla vandhitte ippu vandhu oru nyayamana karname illama vandhu buildinga vandhu vacate pannittaru. So adhanala enna thirupi vandhu andha buildingla tenantapoyunga enak vandhu andha buildingoda possessiona kudunga. Abhin soli tenant vandhu application controllerkka file pannala. Idukko limitation periodruthu. Andha landlord vandhu andha buildingla nyayamla nyayamlaadu reason kaha vacate pannipoyitarunna enakke eppe teriyavudhu. Andha deriyavat date lernu one monthukulla application file pannanoo. So as a tenant enak vandhu okay indha veetla enne kaali pannaru indha veetla avr vandhu. Okay kudiayirtaru oru maasatukulla kudiayernu yarittaru. Yarunna paragu thirumi vandhu aar maasatukulla avr vandhu nyayamana reason soli nyayamana reason edhumai illama avr vandhu vacate pannipoyitaruna. Okay enak enne teriyavardhunna inne teedi lernu oru maasatukulla na enna pannala. Controllerkka controllerkita enne veliyathithu avr illama rukkaru veedu chuma daarukke enne vandhu repossessionla. Like premisesoda repossessiona enakid kudunga abhin solli application file pannala. Indha provision indha particular provision other six monthsukulla reasonable costalama vacate pandharu so enak vandhu. Reposition kudunga abhin solli claimmantra provisionruthu liya not the entire section ten. But indha particular provision vandhu endhanda premiseska applyaahuna. Residential buildingoda rentu vandhu irutthan sayarvai kunjaastiyaa irukkunno. Non residential buildinga arunnaadha adhoda rentu vandhu ambadayyarvai kunjaastiyaa irukkunno. Indha category kida andha building irunda matthunna naa sonna indha meelavula provision applyaahu. Andi paadhutavu situation. Controller vandhu indha ippu section tenne kida nareya applications fileaahoo. Controller vandhu andha application vandhu false illa vexacious andha landlord vandhu tenant vandhu threatenpannanoo merittono abhingrathukaah panntrara. Avr disturbpannanookkaah panntrara poiya vandhu grounds solitara abhin teriyavandhutunna. Controller vandhu application reject pandradoodu matthu illama fineu impose pannala. A maximum of fifty thousand fine can be imposed against the landlord for filing false or vexacious application under section ten. And uh suppose ippu andha section tenne kida landlord file pandrar application to evict the tenant. Andha application vandhu controller reject panniradu abhina ennaapna. Andha paray termslaya tenancy continueaahuu. Adadu anjanerikulavada kudukunno um. Endhandadhalam amenities provide pannirka. Idhuda far rent ithan naalaki tenancy continueaahuu. Namai initiala oru termsla agreeairpoyliya adhee termsla continueaahuu undhrathu visyam. Appli eh po when the application filed under section ten is being rejected by the controller. Tenancy will be continued on the same old terms. So ana ippo okay rejectaayarchu ippu enana landlord abla kana andha tenant evicta panamudiyada abhin ketta kadayadu. Landlord he is entitled to apply again. Hey bani indha reason kada enak. Uh like ena ippu rental areasruthu ippu oru example adhutukonga rental areasruthu. Uh willful default illa abhing controller feel panni andha tenantikka padhnaal time theraru alukla renta kuddurunnu. Avr enna panirara renta kuddutarna. Adhanala indha section ten application vandhu disposeaayarchu. So appran thirumeyenna panra rendu maasakal thirumeyidhe mari prashnapandrana. Odane landlord vandha avan kekkamudiyaadhaan ketta kadayadu. He can file a fresh application he can file uh he is entitled to apply again before the controller. So telling that indhamari rental areas thirupi vandhurukke thirupi idhuda reasona adhanala vandha avan evict pannunga. Abhin soli section tenne kida application file pannalaa. And landlord versus tenant dana eh po me landlord na suit vandhu tenantika like againsta section tenne kida file pannamadi man ketta. Landlordoda agentame pannala section tenne kida. But idhlo oray oru visyana na landlordoda written consentoda file pannu. Like ivroda agentana uh like uh ivr enno oru agent landlord vandhu written consent kudukunno. Ivr enno oru agent. Ivrana vandhu indha buildinga poruthu andha tenant it against eviction proceedings vandhu na file panduthuka allow pannra. Abhin solli avr authorized pannithukrapachitla. Landlordoda agentame he can file a suit under section ten against the tenant. So idallana drugs of section ten. Na provisionayum padichai explainmana rombalenthiyapohu. So ninga na explainmanadhuvetchitu orudharu vandhu fulla elathiyum padichiparunga. Edhada nadulana vitturnaya naa sonnada ungalukku puriilana apramak kailunga antirume explainpannra. So moving to section eleven. Payment or deposit of rent during the tendency of proceeding for eviction. Chiru okay ippu na vandhu section tenne kida oru landlord vandhu uh eviction petition file pannirkaara. Adhupendinga arukunna andha andha petition decideararaki tenant vandhi aakid renta kuddupanga. Kuddukkundhala kandipa kuddukunno obviously. So appa ennaapna. Uh andha idhle vandhu tenantukku oru checkurukke enana. Section tenne kida avanga vandhu landlord vandhu eviction proceeding file pannirukka suitla. Tenant vandhu uh andha case la contestpannavidravey vandhi eppe viduvanga. Rental areas ellathiyum pay panni avr vandha avr meela rental dues illana matthunna avrak contestpanavay viduvanga. So eh side fault illa enno oru renta na kuddutidehna arukka. Eh eh case idhuda abhin sala. Rental areasayirukke na rentay kudukla abhina avr conteste pannavidumata. So the tenant will be allowed to contest only if he pays all the rental areas or continues to deposit the rental amount. Either to the landlord or to the authority. It's not that landlord da vanganu kudukunun avasyailla. Oru vanglanapachitla courtline deposit panni avroda case avr idupannikla. And if he does not pay the rental dues without reason nyayamana karnu illama. Avr vandhu rentu kudukama indha case contestpannunna nannista adhuvetchu proceed pannithundharu abhina. Authority vandhu immediatea. Uh buildingoda possessiona landlordukku kudukusolli order pass pannva. Ena idhe like andha rente undhravisiyathavetchu da indha relationshippayarukke. Ninga adhey kuduklaengumodhu ungaluka anga irukkutukana righte kadayadu. So immediatea andha buildinga vandhu enklandortakudungan solli authority order pass pannva. So ippu vandhu suppose vandhu rental area da disputee. Ena namu indha sectiona vandhina payment or deposit of rent pending proceedings of eviction. So evictionukka vandhu nareya groundsruthu adhal onnada rental areas. Uh meedi groundsla la okay ippu vandhu rental area groundla la evictiona eviction petitiona pendinga arukunna. Adha sammariyaa dispose pannithu uh subsequenta enna panavanga. Uh authority deposit panna solithu. Finala on the main application section tenne kida decideai indhalavanikidaayum. Uh idhuda far rente idhuda rent payable undhrathu designa aanapparagu. Landlord vandha apply panni andha renta receive pannikla. So idhuna section eleven. Uh section twelve vandhu is about. Recovery of possession by landlord for repair or for reconstruction of building in respect of which the government shall be deemed to be the tenant. So ippu idhle vandhu namu adhutipathukurupu selaa provisionliyame abhina uh landlord oruthu. Suppose andha buildinga poruthu tenant vandhu government arunna enna procedure. Tenant vandhu individual arunna enna procedure. Adhuda vandhu section twelve lo adhutadhuvathu varadu section fourteen lo adhuda. Uh section twelve and fourteen similar very similar provision oray oru change vandhu tenancy tenancya tenantiar undhrathu da. So section twelve la uh. Building vandhu landlordukke teevapadhu edukku repair or reconstruction pandrathukku. Indha indha varthee purujukunno kada definition classliyay repairna enna undhrathu terinchukununna sonna. For repair and reconstruction of building vandhu landlordukke possession teevapadhu. Andha mariyana situationla government tenant arunna section twelve applyaahuu. Private persons tenant arunna section fourteen applyaahuu. So ippu enna procedure enna nadaku. Enak ippu vandhu uh landlord vandhu application file pannavaru. Uh so application file pannaparagu authorized officerka application file pannavaru. So enana indha reason soli indha building indha buildingla indha repair carryout pannanoo either demolish pannanoo. Illana indha irappi airpodu. Idhapanalana indha buildinga vandhu paray nalamik konduvaram mudiyaadu. Inna mosamaithe pohu abhinderadhalam explain panni authorized officerka application file pannva. So idhelaati pathuthu authorized officer order pass pannavaru. So order pass panna paragu idhle government tenant arunna government deva irukku abhina kadayadu. Government vandhu yarkada alert pannirukku. Quartersla irukke government quartersna ellathiyuma over officerka alert pannipang. So andha mari situationla andha alatiya kaali panni andha possessionavandhu landlordukku kudukusolli governmentte soliro. Adhuk indha indha mari indha idukku oru silla conditionsruthu. Enna landlord vandhu or under taking kudukunno. Enna under takingna indha. Order pass panni possession avr kaila kadakidhulaya. Andha kaila kadakirathede lernu moonumaasatukulla andha repaira. Senjithu possessionavandhu thirumbi andha alati kitiya kuddutarnu. Kuddutruvaabhin landlord vandhu under taking kudukunno. Moonumaasatukulla repaira pannithu onte thirupi kuddutaranpa abhin solli under taking kudukunno. Rehndavudhu ippu suppose vandhu repairukku kekla demolitionukku keklaan solirunno. Repairna chinni chinnavisyangala carryout pandathukke demolitionna mattama idikkirathukke. Ippu suppose na vandhu um naalumadi irukka veetla naaladumadiya fulla idikkunno nannakirana. Demolition repair categoryla varadu. Naaladumadiyadikkimodhu moonadumadi laalavetchu na idikkimudiyaadu. Adhanala na moonadumadi laarkavangala vandhu temporaryya vandhu enak vandhu possessiona kudunga. Na indha repaira moonumaasatukulla moduchkina taran abhin soli na kekra. Abhina adhuda indha categoriesla varadu. So repairukka na moonumaasatukulla na thirupi kuddutaran soli under taking kudukunno. Demolitionukka vangiirunna enna pananoonna. Material portion of the demolition vandhu oru maasatukulla aaramichirkunno. Aaramichu teedi lernu moonumaasatukulla moduchirkunno demolition. Ena repair carryout pandramadhu demolition panna mudiyaadu. Adhukonno lenthi process konno periyaprocess undhrathunaala adhukporuthu matthu extra time kudduthu. Uh majorana portionavandhu demolish panna start pandradhiyadu oru maasatukulla panni. Moonumaasatukulla moduchu thirumeyandha possessiona avangalukka kuddutaran abhin soli under taking vandhu landlord kudukunno. Ippu suppose andh under taking padi landlord sailpadala andha moonumaasatukulla repaira moduchu kuddutala. Illa andha oru maasatukulla andha material portionavandhu demolish pannala aarambikkeve illa valayana. Officer enna panalana zoomotavau serii illa yarada apply pannalu serii. Real argumentika order pass pannala. Ippu andha real argumentiko illa vandhu. Real argumentika order pass pandranga liya. Andha order meela yar agreevaikkaanga ippu suppose landlord agreevaikkaaru. Illanga indha reasonala vandhu delayaayarchu ennaala pannamudiila adhukuladu real art pannithinga. Uh so indha order meela na appeal pora abhina fifteen daysukulla governmentikida da appeal pannu. See uh so the appellate authority here is the government. Idheemana andha munna sonna provisionla arukka mariyana. Indha mainana provisionla olaidhuthu decideagavarkyuu. Uh like vandhu furthera stay pannasoliyum order government vandhu pass pannala. Appellate authorityki stay pandathukkenna powersirukka adhe powersirukkayi. So ippu idhle inno oru visyam. Indha uh landlordukkundu thirumi possession kaila kadakidhulaya. Andha period poruthu matthu rent vandhu oru chinni disputeaarukku. So uh. Andha date of possessionla ruddha date of undertaking varakkyu. Adadu enak indha building vandhu enkaila innekkidhakidhu. Na vandhu naal oru naal naal kaesha undertaking kudukranana. Indha naal naalaki matthu na vandhu renta vandhu na kekkamudiyaadu. But na undertaking kuddutte abhina renta kudduthaahuu. Enana na undertaking kuddutte repairkaana vangiikka repairpanni onte daan kuddukpoora. Adhanala ni renta kudduthaahuu. So undertaking kuddutha kudduthathede lernu renta kudukunno. Possession kadaachu teedi lernu undertaking kudukkavarkyuu na vandhu renta kekkamudiyaadu. Enak inneek question kadakidhu innekene na vandhu undertaking kuddutte na na odane renta kekla. But na possessiona inneek vangiithu undertaking vandhu na vandhu padhnaal kaeshtukudukranana. Logika yosigala tenantukvandhu indha veedu namukku vara podha vara daanee teriyadu. Na landlord vandhu namukka undertakinga kudukla appanai renta kudukunno na keppalya as a tenant. Andha logicka. Adhutadu landlord not ippu na vandhu repairukka enak vandhu repair carryout pandathukke demolition pandathukke enakindha building veno. Indha possessiona enak kudunga abhin soli kettit. Na vandhu residential buildinga non residential buildinga oh. Non residential buildinga vandhu residential buildinga oh maatalamaan ketta kadayadu. And eppe pannala with the written permission of the officer authorized officer na pannala. Apphina authorized officeroda permission illama na panna mudiyaadu. And adhutavu section vandhu section thirteen. Uh authorized officer to give notice to landlord in certain cases. Endhanda situationla authorized officer landlorduk notice kudukunno. Ippu suppose namu unnaade sonna landlord vandhu specific timekula worka aarambikkenoodhu. Aarambikkele abhina authority enna pananoo. Indha okay naa ni undertaking kuddutirka aarambikirana aarambikkele adhanala na indha. Uh indha uh veedta thirumeyana ivangalukki real art pandrathukka order pooda pora. Enak vandhu like enno oru intentionadu da abhinderadha expresspanni authority vandhu landlordukka notice kudukunno. Landlord vandhu padhnaal naalikulla reply pannanoo shall reply within fifteen days. Appadi pannalana paray order padi real art pandrathukka authorityukka powerruthu. Adhutadu ippu suppose vandhu buildinga vandhu completely demolish panni pudusa constructkaanga. Authorityoda permissionoda abhina for a period of five years indha act vandha applyaahadu as notified by the local authority. Idhur oru uh provision classadhala section thirteenka. Adhutadu vandhu section fourteen vandhu a very similar provision. Uh section twelve la ennalaa solirunno ma adhella idhla applyaahuu. Oray oru visyam idhla vandhu government vandhu tenantarukkamattanga private person tenantarpang. So idhla andha alertment undhrakonsepthu varadu directa ninga tenancy pathi besivinga. Uh enna edukaha enakidhe teevapadhu andha reasona soli na application file pannu suitable order pass pannvaanga. Undertaking kudukunno repairarunna moonumaasatukulla moduchu re-deliver pandranthu. Demolitionarunna material portiono oru maasakal aaramsu moonumaasakal complete pandranthu. Adheemari idhleyum vandhu. அத்தார்ட்டியோட பிரயர் பர்மிஷன் லாம ரெஸிடென்சியல் நான் ரெஸிடென்சியல் பில்டிங்ஸ கேட்டகிரி மாத்ரமாறினா ஆல்ட்ரேஷன் ஆர் ரிபேர் ஆர் டெமாலிஷன் ஆர் பண்ணக்கூடாது என்றது செக்ஷன் 14 12 ல் அண்ட் 14 வேரி சிமுலர் பிரோவிஷன் 12ல வந்து கார்மெண்ட் வந்து டு டேனெண்ட் என்றதுனால அந்த அலாட்மெண்ட் கான்செப்ட் வரு அதுல தான் அதனால செக்ஷன் 13 பொறுத்து மட்டும் அந்த எக்ஸ்ட்ரா ஒரு விஷய ஆத்ரேச் ஆபிஸர் வந்து அண்டர்டேக்கிங் படி லாண்ட்லாட் செயல் படாதப்போ என்ன பண்ணலா எங்கறதுக்கான கான்செப்ட் ஆர் ரியல் ஆட் பண்றதுக்கான ப்ரோசீட்ஜராதா செக்ஷன் 13ல சொல்லிட்டும் செக்ஷன் 14 வந்து 12 மாதிரியேதான் டித்டோ 12 மாதிரியேதான் இதுல இண்டிவிஜியல் பர்ஸன் வந்து டேனெண்ட் என்றதுனால ரியல் ஆட்மெண்ட் ஆத்ரேச் ஆபிஸர் நோட்டிஸ் குடுக்கணும் அப்படின்றதுல வராது அழுவ இதுலயும் வந்து அந்த டேட் ஆப் போஸ்சன்லே அண்டர்டேக்கிங் குடுக்கற வரையும் டெனெண்ட் வந்து லி஖் லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து ரெண்டு கிளைம் மண்ணம் முடியாது செக்ஷன் 14 ஓவர் செக்ஷன் 15 வந்து டெனெண்ட் டு ரியாக்கிபை ஆப்டர் ரிபேர்ஸ் ஓகே ரிபேர் நடந்துருச்சு அப்படின்னா ரிபேர் நான் கேரியோட் பண்ணிட்டுருக்கேன் சஸ்ஸஸ்குலா அந்த மூனு மாச நான் குடுத்த அண்டர்டேக்கிங் படி ஆஸ்ல் லாண்ட்லாட் நான் செயல் படிட்டுருக்கேன் அப்படின்னா இப்ப நான் என்ன பண்ணனோ ரிபேர் முடியப்போது அப்படின்னா இன்னோர் இரு மாசத்துல முடிச்சிருவ வித்தின் டூ மஞ்ச் பிப்போர் தி டேட் ஆப் வர்க் லைக்லீ டு பி கம்ப்ளீட்ட முடிச்சிருவோன்னு எனக்கு தோனுது இன்னோர் இரு மாசத்துல முடிச்சிருவோன்னு தோனுதுனா நான் என்ன பண்ணனோ அந்த மாறி டைம்ல நான் வந்து டெனெண்டுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் அன்சும நான் என்ன பண்ணனும்? அந்த மாறி டைம்ல நான் வந்து டேனெண்டுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் அன்சும். இந்த மாறி ரிபேர் முடிய போதுபா? நான் குடுத்த அண்டர்டேக்கிங் படி நான் செயல்படிட்டுருக்கேன். ரிபேர் வந்து இன்னொரு ரெண்டு மாசத்துல முடுஞ்சிருபா? அதை இன்பார்ம் பண்றா அப்பின் சொல்லி டேனெண்டுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் குடுக்கணும். அப்படி டேனெண்ட் வந்து நோட்டிஸ் வாங்கின 15 ஡ேஸ் குள்ள ரிப்ளை பண்ணனும். என்ன ஓகே நான் வந்து டேனெண்டா கண்டினியூ பண்ணிக்கிறேன்னு சொலலாம். இல்ல அப்பினா எனக்கு வேண்டான்றதையும் சொலலாம். டேனெண்டா கண்டினியூ பண்ணிக்கிறேன் அப்பின் சொல்லி டேனெண்ட் வந்து ரிப்ளை பண்ணிட்டாருனா ரிபேர் முடிஞ்ச தேதில இருந்து ஒரு மாசத்துக்குள்ள அந்த பில்டிங்க ஒட போஸிஷன் லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து டேனெண்டுக்கிட்டு குடுத்தறனும். அப்படி அவர் ரிப்ளைய பண்ணல. எனக்கு வேணான் சொல்லிட்டான் ஓகே கிளியர். அப்படி அவர் நோட்டிஸ் வாங்கி வச்சிட்டு 15 ஡ேஸ் குள்ள ரிப்ளைய பண்ணல அப்பினா அந்த பில்டிங்க பொறுத்து ரிஓக்கிபை பண்றதுக்கான அவர் ரைட். திரும்பி உள்ள போறதுக்கான அவரோட ரைட் வந்து அங்கே முடிஞ்சு பேடும். டொர்மினேட் ஆயிடும். சோ இப்ப வந்து இன்னும் இதுல ஒல்ல சில கான்ஸெப்ட்ஸ் வந்து ரிபீட் ஆரும் மாறிருக்கும். சப்போஸ் வந்து நான் அந்த அண்டர்டேக்கிங் படி நான் வந்து இதும் சிமுலர் தான். லைக் வந்து லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து வாக்க வந்து டைம்க்ல அண்டர்டேக்கிங்ல சொன்ன டைம்க்ல ஆரம்பிக்கல. இல்ல வந்து இந்த ஒரு மாசத்துக்குள்ள ரிபேர் முடிஞ்சு ஒரு மாசத்துக்குள்ள பில்டிங் வந்து டேனெண்ட் குடுக்கணும்னு இப்ப 15ல பார்த்தோம் இல்லையா? அந்த மாதிரியான டைம் ஫ிரேம் அப் பாலோ பணல. அப்பினா டேனெண்ட் என்ன பண்ணல? அந்த பெயில்யர் ஆகறது தேதில இருந்து 30 நாலுக்குள்ள கண்ட்ரோலருக்கு அப்லிகேஷன் பயில் பண்ணி இந்த மாறி அண்டர்டேக்கிங்ல சொன்னாரு. நடக்கல. இல்ல ரிபேர் முடிஞ்சிருச்சு ஒரு மாசத்துக்குள்ள அவர் பில்டிங் குடுத்திருக்கணும். குடுக்கல. அதனால என்ன வந்து பில்டிங்க ஒட போஸிஷன்ல போடுங்கா அப்பின் சொல்லி கண்ட்ரோலர்ட்டா அப்லிகேஷன் பயில் பண்ணலாம். அடுத்த செக்ஷன் 16 வந்து டேனெண்ட் டு ரிஓக்கிபை பில்டிங் டேனெண்ட் டு ஆக்கிபை இத் தி பில்டிங் இஸ் நாட் டெமாலிஷ்ட. இப்ப பில்டிங் அது டெமாலிஷ் பண்றதுக்காக நான் வாங்கின. ஆனால் நான் டெமாலிஷ்ய பண்ணல அப்பினா இத் தி கண்ட்ரோலர் ஆர்டர்ஸ் தி லாண்ட்லாட் டு பிட் இன் போஸிஷன் அப் தி பில்டிங் பர் டெமாலிஷ்சிங். அண்ட் லாண்ட்லாட் ஡ஸ் நாட் கம்மன்ஸ் தி வர்க் ஆஸ் பர் தி அண்டர்டேக்கிங். நம்ம முன்னாடி செக்ஷன் 12 லை 14ல நம்ம அண்டர்டேக்கிங் பார்த்தோம். மூனு மாசம். ஒரு மாசத்துக்குள்ள மெட்டீரியல் போஸ்ட்னு டெமாலிஷ் பண்ண. ஸ்டாண்ட் பண்ணிருக்கணும். திரீ முன்ஸ் குள்ள கம்ப்ளீட் பண்ணிருக்கணும் இன்று. அப்படி அந்த அண்டர்டேக்கிங் படி செயல்படல. டெமாலிஷ் பண்ணல அப்பினா டேனெண்ட் வந்து லாண்ட்லாடுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் அனுபல. இந்த மாறி பில்டிங் டெமாலிஷ் பண்றதுக்கான நீங்க கேட்டீங்க. நீங்க அந்த டெமாலிஷ் பண்ற மாறிய தெரியலை எனக்கு. அதனால் நான் வந்து திரும்பி வர போறேன். உள்ள. எனக்கு வந்து ரிஓக்கிபை பண்ண போறேன். அப்பின் சொல்லி லாண்ட்லாடுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் அனுபல. நோட்டிஸ் வாங்கின தேதில இருந்து 15 ஡ேஸ் குள்ள அவர் டெமாலிஷ் பண்ணல அப்பினா அந்த 15 ஡ேஸ் குள்ள நோட்டிஸ் வாங்கின தேதில இருந்து 15 ஡ேஸ் குள்ள பில்டிங்க ஒட போஸிஷன் டேனெண்டுக்கு குடுத்தறனும். அப்படியும் குடுக்கலையா? டேனெண்டுக்கு என்ன ஆப்சன் இருக்கு? கண்ட்ரோலருக்குதா அப்லிகேஷன் பயில் பண்ணி இந்த மாறி பில்டிங்க எவறு டெமாலிஷ் பண்ண கேட்டாரு. ஆனால் டெமாலிஷ் பண்ணல. நான் நோட்டிஸ் அனுச்சிட்ட. 15 ஡ேஸ் லாப்ஸ் ஆயிருச்சு. அப்படே வர எனக்கு போஸிஷன் தரம் அட்டராரு. அதனால நீங்க வந்து எனக்கு இந்த பில்டிங்க ஒட போஸிஷன குடுங்கா அப்பின் சொல்லி கண்ட்ரோலருக்குதா அப்லிகேஷன் பயில் பண்ணலாம். அப்பின்று செக்ஷன் 16. அடுத்த செக்ஷன் 17 வந்து லாண்ட்லாட் நாட் இன்டர்பியர் வுத் தி அமெனிட்டிஸ் என்ஜாய்ட் பயில் டேனெண்ட். அமெனிட்டிஸ்னா என்னிருக்கு? செய் ஷெட்யூல் ஒன்ல சொல்லிருக்கதா நம்ம முன்னாடியே பார்த்தோம். சோ அந்த ஒரு லிஸ்ட் அப் கேட்டெக்ரீஸ். அப்ளை அப் வாட்டர், எலக்ட்ரிஸிட்டி, பாஸேஜ், ஸ்டார்ட் கேர்ஸ், லைட், லாவர்ட்ரீஸ், லி஫்ட், கான்செவன்சி, சானேட்டிரி சர்விசஸ் இதெல்லாமே லிஸ்ட் அப் அமெனிட்டிஸ்கிள்ள வரு. சோ இந்த அமெனிட்டிஸ்லா டேனெண்டுக்கு இருக்குற ரைட். அந்த ரைட்ட லாண்ட்லாட் காண்ட்ரேவின் பண்ணக்கூடாது. அப்படி பண்ண டேனெண்ட் என்ன பண்ணலாம்? கண்ட்ரோலருக்கு அப்லிகேஷன் பயில் பண்ணி சூட்டப்ல் ஆர்டர் வந்து கண்ட்ரோலர் பாஸ் பண்ணுவாரு. அப்படி கண்ட்ரோலர் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்ண ஒடனேயே லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து ரெஸ்டோர் பண்றீரு. ரெஸ்டோர் இம்மெட்டிலேட்லீ. இப்ப சப்போஸ் வந்து பண்ணல அப்பினா ஒரு செவன் ஡ேஸ் வரைக்கும். இப்ப லாண்ட்லாட் ஡ஸ் நாட் ரெஸ்டோர் இட் வித்தன் அப் பீரியட் அப் செவன் ஡ேஸ். நான் கண்ட்ரோலர் என்ன பண்ணுவாரு? ஓகே இதுக்கு மேலே வெயிட் பண்ண முடியாது. நீயே என்ன ரிபேரோ என்ன ரெஸ்டோர் பண்றதுக்கா ஆக்ரசலவா நீ பண்ணிக்கப்பா அதை வந்து ரெண்டுல கழிச்சுக்கோ அப்பின் சொல்லி கண்ட்ரோலர் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்ணிருவா. சோ இதுல வந்து அந்த ரெஸ்டோர் பண்றது பொறுத்து இன்றிம் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்றதுக்கும் கண்ட்ரோலருக்கா பவர் இருக்கு. அத இன்றிம் ஆர்டர்னா லாண்ட்லாடுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் அனுபாம. என்ன சப்போஸ் எலக்ட்ரிஸிட்டியலா அமெனிட்டிஸ்கிள்ள வருது. லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து எலக்ட்ரிஸிட்டிய கட்பணியுச்சுன்னா அந்த வீட்டில இருக்குவே முடியா. சோ லாண்ட்லாடுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் குடுத்து அவருக்கு கேட்டு ஡ிசைட் பண்ணி எலக்ட்ரிஸிட்டி குடுத்துறவரைக்கு டேனெண்ட் நல்லா வெயிட் பண்ண முடியா. சோ அந்த மாறி சிச்சியோசன்ல இன்றிம் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்ணி நோட்டிஸ் லாண்ட்லாடுக்கு நோட்டிஸ் போகாமலே கூட அமெனிட்டிஸ்கு ரெஸ்டோர் பண்றது கண்ட்ரோலர் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்ண முடியு. அண்ட் இப்ப சப்போஸ் இதுல வந்து பால்ஸ் கம்ப்லேண்டோ இல்ல லாண்ட்லாட் வந்து டேனெண்ட் வந்து பால்ஸ் கம்ப்லேண்ட் பயில் பணவா இல்ல லாண்ட்லாட் அமெனிட்டிஸ்கு கட்பணியிருந்தாவோ கண்ட்ரோலர் வந்து காம்பன்ஸேஷன் வந்து அவார்ட் பண்ணல. நாட் மோர் தஞ் பெஸ்டி ரூப்பீஸ். இது தான் செக்ஷன் 17. அடுத்த செக்ஷன் 18 வந்து எக்ஸிகுவேஷன் அப் ஆர்டர்ஸ். யார் 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 பண்ணுவா? இந்த ஆக்டு கிள்ள பாஸ் பண்ற ஆர்டர் இருந்து யார் பண்ணுவா? இந்த ஆக்டு கிள்ள நான் அந்த ஒரு லிஸ்ட் அப் செக்ஷன்ஸ் குடுத்திருக்கேன். 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. அண்ட் ஆர்டர் அப்லீல் அண்ட் 23 அண்ட் ஆர்டர் ரிவிஷன் அண்ட் 25. இந்த செக்ஷன்ஸ் கிள்ள மட்டும் ஆர்டர் பாஸ் பண்றது போதி சொல்லிருக்காங்க. சோ இந்த செக்ஷன்ஸ் எல்லாத்தைக் கிள்ள பாஸ் பண்ற ஆர்டரியோ மூன்சிவ் கேட்டெக்ரீல் இருக்கவங்களா எக்ஸிகுவேட் பண்ணுவாங்க. மோர் தஞ் ஒன் மூன்சிவ் ஆர்ந்தா பிரிஞ்சபல் மூன்சிவ் எக்ஸிகுவேட் பண்ணுவாங்க. சோ எக்ஸிகுவேஷன் கோட்ட அங்கதான் அர்த்த. சோ இதுல கண்டிஷன் என்னனா? இதுல ஒரேயொரு விஷயம் சொல்லிருக்காங்க.